Good evening. It's 6:00. I'd like to call the board meeting for November 6, 2023, to order. We do have a quorum. I'd like to ask Ms. LaBreck if she would lead us in our invocation.
Yes. Bow your heads. Gracious God, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to serve our community. We ask you to watch and guide us as we keep what's best for the students of this community at the forefront of our thoughts and actions. Please help us to have clear and open minds as we strive to move forward in the work with which we are tasked today. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Dr. Lindsay, if you'll lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on our agenda is to discuss if we need any adjustments to the agenda. Dr. Winborn, do you have anything?
No, Madam Chair.
Board members? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as set forth?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made to adopt the agenda, as written, and it's been made and second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Adoption of the agenda carries. Item three is communication and community. We will hear from our superintendent, Dr. Winborn. It's time for his report.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chair, board members, team members, and those in attendance and joining via video. I am pleased to report that since we last met, school has been proceeding very well. Tonight, you will once again receive important updates in each of our strategic priorities. I'm very pleased with how productive the Board of Education Committee meetings have been, and much of what you will be reviewing and/or approving tonight flows directly from our work in those meetings. And it's proving to be a very effective way for members of our senior staff to collaborate and work closely with board members to make sure that we're cutting straight to the heart of the matter and paying attention to our most pressing needs. So I thank you, board members, for your help in that area. For tonight's meeting, first, you'll see quite a few items under consent, and then several batches of policy revisions. And this is something we're continuing to work hard to get caught up in that area. A lot of work has gone into our policy review. And then you're going to receive some academic updates. And as promised, we're going to continue to include data around our three main areas of focus, which include attendance, discipline, and then a more detailed look at academic progress of our students thus far this school year. You're also going to get some updates and data about where we are with our classified and certified staffing, as well as some important information from Ms. Hines about where we are in our budget process. And then finally, we're going to receive some updates in the area of operations. I'd like to pause here, though, and, as a point of privilege, take a moment and spotlight the Transportation Department. Unfortunately, Mr. Bill Graham could not be here tonight. He's under the weather. So I'm going to kind of, on his behalf, share something with everyone here tonight. While Dr. Hamm's department is part of operations, what I want to share with you really is related to our number-one priority of safety, safety of our children and of our staff. This year, the results of the North Carolina State Safety Inspection of our school buses resulted in the best score ever for our school district. That's right, ever. In fact, I am told that this score could be one of the best scores in the region, if not the entire state. It is truly remarkable. When I saw the number, I was blown away because I've been, this is something that I have been familiar and accustomed to working with for many years, and it's truly remarkable. So I am so proud of this team for their attention and focus on this work. It makes me really proud, and I also sleep a lot better at night knowing that our buses are some of the safest in the state. So thank you, Dr. Hamm, and I know you're here tonight. Please pass along to your entire department just how proud we are of them and how much we appreciate everything that they do. So heartfelt thanks for that. So, board members, I look forward to a productive meeting this evening and us staying focused on what's most important. Thank you.
On behalf of the Grahamville County Board of Education, I'd like to welcome all of you also who are joining us tonight in Carson and online. Since our last regular monthly board meeting, our students have completed their first quarter of the school year. Time does fly. Our schools have worked hard to get our students off to a good start and also to develop their two-year improvement plans as required by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. At our October 17 work session, principals presented their improvement plans to our board for questions and feedback. A summary of each school's plan is currently available on our board docs webpage, and the plans will be voted on later in the meeting. Upon approval by DPI, the new plans will be posted on our Grahamville County Public Schools website. These plans, though, are much more than the fulfillment of a state requirement. Rather, they represent the hard work of each school's administrators, teachers, and staff to identify how best they can improve student outcomes at their respective schools. Each school's plan is different to reflect the needs of their students, but all are aligned with the areas of focus in Grahamville County Public Schools: safety, academics, attendance, and behavior. Our middle and high schools held their Student of Merit programs during the month of October. I was able to attend the programs for Northern Grahamville Middle School and Grahamville Early College. I thank all of you, board members, who were able to attend some of these programs and support these children. Celebrating academic success is a great way to start the school year. We are proud of these students and encourage them to continue their pursuit of excellence. Many of our schools also had fall festivals, which provided fun weekend activities for students and their families. And if you follow your schools on Facebook, you'll see a lot of good, fun pictures of kids having a good time. Vice Chair Peace and I had our first liaison meeting on October 30 with Commissioner Russ May, Chair of the Grahamville County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Tony Kozort, and County Manager Drew Cummings. Dr. Winborn and Mrs. Hines, our finance officer, joined us for the meeting. We discussed challenges ahead for our school system and shared information with them that will keep them well informed as to our direction and our anticipated needs. Our goal is to have good communication between our two boards throughout the year. We were unable to finish our complete agenda items for discussion, but we have a scheduled follow-up meeting for the 20th of this month. We appreciate the Grahamville County Board of Commissioners' continued support for Grahamville County Public Schools. I would also like to thank board members for their hard work on the committees that have met since our October board meeting. Your time, commitment, and diligence are commendable. This concludes my remarks. We will now hear reports from our board members, starting with Mr. Peace, and go around the table. Mr. Peace?
Thank you. I've attended quite a few committee meetings, I've attended quite a few committee meetings this month. I'll start with the Finance Committee meeting that was rather extensive with lots of information. Well, let's call it numbers. And I just want to thank Ms. Hines for that, what she and her staff do in that regard. I think in shortage of funding, we are doing relatively well, based on her being able to use what we have in an effective way. And if you read the report that was given, it's pretty extensive, but it's all related to her and what she has done for us as it relates to our funding. I also attended Operations Committee meeting, Calendar Committee meeting, and it's been real interesting to see the hard work that our staff do to prepare for the committee meetings that I've attended. They leave very little in terms of asking questions because they just put it all out there, and if you can read and comprehend, you're just thinking for what they do, for doing what they do. And that's a compliment, in my opinion, for any organization of this size to be able to do that. I won't comment on the liaison. I think we had a great meeting. We have a good relationship at this point, working with the commissioners. We haven't had to make any demands of them yet, so I don't know how that's going to go if we get to that point. But anyway, I think it'll all go well. We try to stay on friendly notes with everybody. That's all I have, I think.
Yes, so I participated in the Operations Committee meeting, and we obviously had heard at that time about the bus inspection, which was super exciting. Other things that we discussed are actually, and things that were brought to our attention were just like bus routes that are resulting from the consolidation that we had and some challenges that have come up that need further review and that sort of thing. Mr. Connor was able to provide a production room update, and that actually includes the future plan of providing podcasting to four schools, which is very exciting, and then also growing an intern in that as well. And then finally, we discussed designing a dual-purpose athletic facility for both schools, the school district and the community, and just the possibility of that going, looking forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I had a chance to attend the Holly Student of Merit a few weeks ago. It was very nice to attend by parents, and kids were a little excited about being in their new environment. That seemed to go well as well. I also volunteered at the Area ACIM, where they give out food boxes to families throughout the community here. And I did hear a lot of our schools called as they prepared those backpack buddies to send kids with them home on Friday. So I'd like to thank Student Sports Services here, the council, make sure to identify those kids in their school who may be have food insecurities for the weekends. So we have a great relationship between ACIM and also the schools, make sure our kids get meals. I also attended a nice little chili cook-off at the county office a few weeks ago, on the 31st here. It was a very good lunch here, and I think was also important to see that, which I enjoyed seeing, the relationship between the new superintendent and the staff. They are a great way to build staff morale and a cooperative relationship here and attitudes here, and that's always very, very important for leadership and the staff to get together and work as a team because there's no "I" in "team." Thank you, guys. Great, great merit to our new superintendent and staff members there at central office here. Way to go.
Dr. Breck?
Yeah, so just a quick update. So I missed my committee meeting last week. My baby sister got married, so I had to go to that. That was an important, my only baby sister, so that was exciting, but I don't have a committee meeting to speak on. I just wanted to touch real briefly about the improvement plans meeting at the workshop from two weeks ago. That was one of my favorite meetings we've had. It was just so awesome to see just the excitement that all the administrations and all the team members had about all the different plans, and you can just see like a reignited excitement about the schools and what their plans were for at each and every step along the way. So I just wanted to say how much I really enjoyed that meeting, and thanks again to the faculty that came during those meetings and shared their plans for the schools. It was, you know, the excitement was infectious, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just like to give you just a little bit of things as far as going around in the community and helping out the Student of Merits. And I know we were at the same one with the Northern Grahamville Middle School, Student of Merit, but then I also went, the next day, went to the J.F. Webb School, Student of Merit, and then I also attended the Grahamville Academy, Student of Merit. And I did say, on behalf of us, we were so, you know, congratulated all of those students on behalf of the school board. Those were great sessions, and the parents were there, and they were just having a great time at that session as well. I did attend the Fall Festival at West Oxford. I had a great time attending that and looking at all the activities. The children were having a great time with the parents, bringing the children and going through all of the games and things there, and also the food as well. As a matter of fact, they had a bake-off, too. Some of the teachers and all, they had cake that people bitted on. So there was many cakes. I know at least 15 or 20 cakes, and I bitted on quite a few. And I ended up winning three, three cakes and cupcakes. So I won those. So that was great. I enjoyed that. Also, the Policy Committee meeting. I know we're going to hear more about that, but yes, I was at the Policy Committee meeting as well. And also, just want you to know that I am a buddy reading volunteer at West Oxford. I have my little young one every Wednesday, and he reads to me, and he and I then have a little bit of fun, but he has to read to me first, and we have to discuss things. So that's great. And the last thing I attended was the county manager going around, having discussions in all of the districts. I attended that session with our county manager, and that was a great session, all the things that he was telling the people there from that particular district.
So it seems like forever ago, but in the middle of October, we, myself and also Dr. Winborn, attended the Fall Law Conference in Asheville. So that was October 11 through the 13th. And hopefully, you all received your email today that has like my eight pages of notes, so I'm going to try to scale that down a little bit for members of the public. But some of the presentations were topics like student discipline, EC updates, laws protecting minors, with a completely separate presentation on the Bill of Rights, the new parental Bill of Rights, disaster planning, which was really interesting, school construction with tips on how to navigate relationships with county commissioners, a really extensive budget update. I think there were two different slides, slide shows, that was like 100 slides or so, so you should have those in your email, too, because that was a ton of information with the new budget stuff from the General Assembly. But that had a lot of the stuff about, stuff that'll impact education, so salary increases, recruitment and retention supplements, the opportunity scholarship expansion, and I think it even hit on the graduation requirement changes because that was in there, too. And also, I would just like to add that, like, I really appreciate the opportunity to go to these trainings, just because being able, the presentations are awesome and really informative, but also the networking and meeting other board members from across the state is invaluable. Being able to talk to people from all different regions of North Carolina and see what their boards are doing is really fun and amazing. A little bit about what I've done for the past month. So I visited a social studies classroom at Butlerston Middle. That was really cool. They were actually touching a little bit on the Constitution and how people, how we differ from England and how we have a representative government. So that presented a really unique opportunity for some of the social studies classes to ask questions. And these kids are so, they're so smart. Like, the questions that they came up with were, they were really good, so I was really impressed with that class. I also went to a couple of the Student of Merit ceremonies, Butlerston Middle, Holly, and South Grahamville. Really proud of all those kids. There was a large number of students being recognized, so that was amazing. I also attended the Spark Lab ribbon cutting at South Grahamville. That was a really unique and interesting lab that we've created there. And I'd also like to thank all of the other officials that showed up. So there was, I know there was one from Butler, and I cannot remember her name. Yeah, and I'm so sorry, I cannot remember her name, but there was also Commissioner Kaczynski from Creedmore, County Commissioner May, and then also one of our state representatives, Frank Sossaman, attended. So I'm very thankful to them for their support of our schools. Also, made it by Camp Oak Hill for the Virtual Enterprise Retreat on Monday morning, and I want to thank Bobby Wheeler, the mayor of Creedmore, for coming out. And also, I was going to tell my other board members that Mrs. Winborn actually hit me up for an opportunity for the kids. So she was asking about our availability to have a few minutes possibly before future board meetings to let her VE kids come and do their practice runs in front of us. So we can talk about that later, but she said it would be super quick, but a way to get them in front of people and do a practice run. I also went to the Crime Stoppers banquet and was able to see a bunch of our local law enforcement officials be recognized. So that was really special, and that one of the county manager listening sessions, the one in Creedmore, I was able to drop in for the first hour of that and listen to Mr. Cummings give his information, and the Songs of America Choral Concert at South Grahamville, which was absolutely amazing. So huge shout-out to Jenny Hopgood and all of her awesome students down there. And I apologize for the length of this, you guys. And then finally, the Policy Committee update. So of course, we met on October 18, and the minutes for that meeting are on board docs for the public and any other members that are not on the Policy Committee. And we meet again this Thursday. Our meetings are about two hours long at this point, but really productive. And I just want to let you guys know, to the public mostly, that most of the work that we've been doing in updating our policies, a lot of these policies have not been looked at for years and years and years, and so it's really important that we're kind of combing through and updating and making them really specific to our students and our school system. And then also, a lot of it is bringing us into compliance with a lot of the legal changes that happened at the General Assembly this past year. So we want to make sure that we're, you know, following the law as best that we can. And, you know, it's policies that handle things like parental concerns and even the recent changes to graduation requirements. And also, just wanted to let everybody know that our committee meetings are open to the public. They are announced on our website a couple of days in advance, and so if anybody ever wants to come and sit in and see all of the awesome work that all of our committees are doing, we absolutely invite you to come and sit in.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. You put some miles on your car, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. I will be giving the report for the Human Resources Innovation Committee. That's the one we recently established. We met on October 27, and the minutes there are on board docs. I can't tell you everything we talked about because I'd be talking for 30 minutes, but it was really a productive meeting with a lot of good ideas. The committee received updates on our retention and recruitment efforts and discussed ways we can address the well-being of our employees. We got plans in the works for a new teacher warming, which will provide collected new and gently-used household items and hopefully some gift cards for teachers, for our new teachers. We talked about international teachers, but this would include all of our new teachers. When our teachers move here and have to establish new living quarters, many times it's quite a task if they're coming to a new area, so we hope that will be helpful to them as well as a welcome gesture. The Grahamville Ed Foundation says they will help us with this initiative. And there are challenges, and we talked about those in finding houses for new teachers, and I think that's a statewide issue. So we are discussing some of those possibilities. Ms. Courtney Kern, our Executive Director of Human Resources, indicated that she and her staff will be focusing on recruitment and retention of certified and classified employees. We want to make sure we include all of our employees as we look at retention and recruitment. And on behalf of the board, I would like to thank Ms. Angela Coghill and Ms. Kern and her staff for their hard work in the area of recruitment and retention. So far, our employees are our most valuable asset, and they've done a fabulous job, and we really thank them. The only other thing I thought about that I did not mention is that I think Mr. Peace and I did attend the safety meeting. I had to leave a little early. The SROs were there and other representatives, and I think that was very productive. So that concludes our board reports. Everybody's been busy, and it's going to get busier with the holidays and holiday programs. So hopefully, we can maybe, Dr. Winborn, get a list of what's coming up at all of our schools out so we can all plug in our calendars.
Yes, ma'am. We'll be sure to do that.
Thank you. Our next item is 304, our Grahamville County Public Schools Policy Revisions, first read. They were included in your board docs. And what action do we need to take on those? Any?
Generally, we approve, go ahead and have a review to proceed with that.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The motion to approve, or first read to move to second read, has been made and second, and is, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? None? The motion carries. Okay. The next action is to approve the second read of the policies listed under item 305. Do we have a motion to approve based on the second read?
Motion to approve second read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is our public comments section.
Chairwoman Williams, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment, nor did we have any electronic submissions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kern. All right, we have under item four, consent items. They conclude approval of meeting minutes from August 7 to 23 meeting, school improvement plans, item 402, 403, amendment to the contract for installation of a grease trap at Butlerston Elementary School, 404, field trip approval, and 405, Kitty Clubhouse 2O contract. Do we have a motion to do these as one motion, approve them?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I understand that Mr. Graham is not here, but did, correct me if I'm wrong, did we not approve a contract like months and months ago for a grease trap for Butlerston Elementary? Does anybody have any input at the?
You know, it's something about another part is needed. Is that what?
Basically, a change order and the additional approval for a pump, which I believe was something that they did not anticipate.
Right. I mean, you know, I see the action. I was just, I guess I'm surprised at the amount.
Shocking.
Right. Okay. That's, I just didn't know if it was like, I don't know, this like unicorn piece of equipment that like we can't find anywhere, or?
Yes, ma'am. And it's been, it's been very frustrating for the school because this project is just dragging on and on, and it's interrupting their ability to use cafeteria, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so.
So it's affecting our ability to, wow.
Yeah. But with this, with the approval of this contract, this should be resolved by the end of the month.
So we're able to get the part quickly?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. Motion to approve consent items as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and second to approve all consent items. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Next section is academic success, and I will turn that over to you, Dr. Winborn, to introduce.
Yes, well, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to let Mr. Perry come up to the podium with Ms. Amy Rice, and they're going to introduce you to some of our instructional coaches and our curriculum support specialists and coordinators. I'll just say, to me, the investment that the district is making with these individuals is paying huge dividends. I continue to hear very, very positive feedback from our teachers and our principals about the value of these individuals' work. So I thought it was very important that we, you board members, hear a little bit tonight about what they do and just how important their role is. I put a very high premium on their work, so, Perry.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. Good evening, board members. Tonight,
All right. Thank you, Dr. Winmore. Good evening, Board members. Tonight, Ms. Amy Rice, who's in charge of testing accountability, as well as our instructional coaches, will be providing information about the coaching and support that these individuals have been providing our district for the last two years. So, I want you to... We talked a lot about our coaches in our meetings, but I want you to put a name on their face and kind of hear from them about the work that they do and how they're helping to improve student achievement along with working with our teachers here in Granville County Public Schools. So, Ms. Rice?
Thank you, poor Chair, Board members. I'm going to introduce those that are here. Do what? Oh, thank you. So, we have four of our six instructional support personnel with us today. I'm going to have them stand. They're back there. First is Catherine. Catherine Khalil, please wave. She is our kindergarten through fifth grade instructional math coach. Lauren Piper, she is our K-12 literacy coordinator. Lori Peryear, K-12 science instructional coach. And then we have Deborah Rickman, who is here with us as well, and she is our K-5 instructional literacy coach. Susan Randolph had a previous engagement, and Karen Westbrook is not feeling well this evening. So, thank you, ladies. And if anybody asks me a question I can't answer, I'll have them come up. But I did jokingly tell them last week when we had a debriefing meeting together about the work that they've been doing that I had pulled the job description that when we posted for these positions, and I wanted to let them know that they are to be miracle workers. Because if you read the job description and what they are called to do, it truly would be a miracle to get through all those with just six that we have. But they work tirelessly. They are in buildings. They are working with principals. They are working with teachers, and they are working with students. And so, that is the overall goal of instructional coaches, is to work with teachers, but so that it gets to the granular level of changing student learning. So, next slide. Thank you. So, this little graphic kind of explains all the things that they do, and they have done each of these this year already. Providing job embedded professional development. Sometimes that professional development is just during the PLCs, when they meet with staff members during their planning time, or they have also offered PD on all of our PD workdays as well with our teachers, and they have... And continue to do so throughout the year. Model and demonstrate best practices. They are in classrooms, and they teach lessons. They model the whole lesson. Sometimes it's a small part of the lesson, but they model for the teachers and then debrief about what they saw. The key is that it's non-evaluative feedback. So, we do have to continue to push that with administrators and things. These are partners. They are mentors. They are to go in and not be a, "You're coming to watch me, but please come in and watch me and give me feedback." So, it's not evaluative, and they just reflect together to make a difference. They are site-based teacher leaders. All of these are teachers. You know, they are teacher leaders. And we're going to have to take out that site base, though, because they serve everyone. So, they are at every site throughout our district. They create an environment where student needs drive professional development. So, they break down data. I have had the opportunity to sit in on several PLCs that they have led, and it's always data-driven. Let us go over the data and talk about our students' needs and where they are. They offer guidance and feedback when teachers need it the most. Sometimes it's just to listen and let a teacher cry, vent, you know, or just say, "What do I do from here?" Inspire teachers to try new learning strategies. And again, that goes back by modeling those. And again, what I started off with, they want to move from teacher-centered learning to student-centered learning and always be focused on our students. And they just do an incredible job with this. Any questions? I won't read these quotes to you because you all can read, and they're... We sent out just a form to offer staff and principals feedback on the difference that coaches have already made in their building. This is... These are just four of the quotes. We received many, but it's just, you can see the work that they're doing, and it's hard to put it into words and quantify all that they do. But they... I can tell you this. They walk into a building one day with an agenda in mind, and sometimes it's not that agenda. They just meet the teacher's needs where they are when they walk in that building, and I appreciate all that they do. Any questions?
I'm very excited about the new look of trying to coach and teachers who are in classroom. I think it's going to, of course, help improve test score, and also, it very well serve as an avenue to recruit more teachers to our district as well. Going to have that support come into our system. So, good job, and I'm looking forward to hearing more as time goes.
I'm glad you said that. Shelby Hunt sends out a survey each year about teachers, and, you know, it's one of our Title II, Title I surveys. And one of the key indicators for teachers staying in the profession or staying in the school that they're at is instructional support. And that's just the key, that we have to offer that support for them if we want them to stay.
Any other questions?
Okay. Very good.
Well, we thank all of you for everything you do for kids every day. Thank you, Ms. Rice.
Thank you very much.
I do want to add as well, thank you to the coaches. They've done a marvelous job the last two years, and we just can't do it without their support and their assistance. Doing a great job. All right. So, next up, we have our academic update. All right. So, we'll start off with our beginning of the year data. As I mentioned in our last meeting, we were beginning to receive the data back from some of our strongest data points for the year. One of the first pieces is the iReady data. So, data. So, the iReady data is information that is across grade spans for grades K through 8. Kind of shows where students are learning and compared... It's nationally normed and compared to other students in North Carolina. You will see how our district's... Our students place in mathematics. Clearly, there's some work to be done, as there are some gaps between where our students are against North Carolina trends and national trends. All right. Same for reading. So, there's a larger gap there. You notice in the yellow, students who are one grade level below, the light red, there's two grade levels below, and three, the third red is three grade levels below. So, we need to work on closing those gaps to make sure our students are receiving a quality education. We continue to do that by the same things that I mentioned before, clear learning goals, making sure that we are teaching the course... Teaching the curriculum with rigor and alignment and high student engagement. So, that's going to be very important. So, our next data set is M-Class, and M-Class is our K-3 reading data. Here, you would notice some trends between... Flip forward. There we go. That's current as of October 25th. The first block of line you'll notice is kindergarten, and that compares us with the state of North Carolina. So, it shows you where other students have been placing or measured for year '22, '23, and '23, '24. Again, there are still some... Lots of work to be done, but if you notice that there are some... There are decreases from last year to this year with the number of students who are below level. There are still a lot of students below level. Don't get me wrong. So, I'm not going to paint this marvelous picture, but there's still... Students are growing, and we can see, clearly see a difference from one year to the next. Are there any questions so far? And this is reading.
So, I just want to... This is a clarification question.
Sure.
So, last month, we were presented the BOG data, right?
Yes.
Which was the third grade, and how many kids already knew what they were supposed to learn in all of their grade, correct?
Correct.
But this is how many kids are currently proficient, right?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
You're right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And this is grades K through 3. So, go to the next slide. This is all reading, reading data here.
And iReady is 3 through 8?
K through 8.
K through 8?
Yes.
How often will you be giving that iReady throughout the year?
iReady is two other times. So, you have a middle of the year and an end of the year. But students are using iReady in their classrooms.
For like kindergarten, how... I'm sorry. How do we assess with iReady if most of them are not proficient at reading? Because it's electronic, correct?
Great question. So, with kindergarten, they're all going to come in below level because they're kindergarters.
Right.
So, there are mechanisms in the electronic program that's kind of built towards kindergarten students. It's almost like, I won't say play, but it's more animated, so kids can point and click at things.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, we'll continue to the next slide. NC check-ins. So, are you guys familiar with NC check-ins? You may have heard us use these terms before, but this is a sort of a check-in for a formative assessment to kind of see where students are placing. So, we use this for our EOG and EOC level courses for grades 3 through 8, and then for those core assessments in secondary classrooms. And I'll allow Ms. Rice to kind of talk to me more about NC check-ins because that's administered through testing and accountability from NC DPI.
So, for every subject that we have an EOG or EOC for, we have a check-in for those. And so, our students can take those. It's different in numbers. But for the grades 3 through 8, math and reading, there's three for the year that they can take as well. Same for science in grades 5 and 8. Biology has four, and then our other high school subjects have two. There's just a semester-long block, so they take the two check-ins. But the great thing about the check-ins is that it's from the same pool of questions that the EOG questions come from. So, very... Sometimes identical questions, just maybe the number has changed for the math. And so, it does give our students a chance to see and our teachers a chance to see what is a state-level depth-of-knowledge, Level 2 question that would show up on the EOG. And so, the nice thing about the check-ins is that both our students and teachers have access to them after the test is completed to review. They can't download it. They can't print it, but they can log in and review it again, and the teachers can shine it on the board. So, if you'll go to the next slide. So, this is an example of... A brief example of a data page that teachers can pull up, and so, it would have all their students' names listed on the side, and it lets them know by each question what standard or goal that that question aligns to and what percentage of students got that question correctly. So, you can look at question one for this biology check-in, and 96.2 of the students got that question correct. So, great. But then we move on over and scroll across to see, well, which questions did my class not do well on? And the numbers at the top are hyperlink to the actual question. So, teachers can just click on that. The question comes up, and they can review these. And just in a PLC group that Susan Randolph was leading with math teachers just last week, some of our new teachers and our international teachers, it was an eye-opener for them to see the style of question and the questions, how they're answered. These are not just do the math problem. It is going to be two-to-three-step type problems that they're going to have to complete.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Before you move on, if I may, Board members, the screenshots that you've seen tonight of the various data points from M-Class, iReady, NC check-ins, these are the highest level pretty much that you can see. These are very powerful tools that teachers can really drill down to see how every individual student is doing in their class. And when we talk about MTSS, you know, a lot of the conversations, Mr. Perry said, when they're in their PLCs, their professional learning communities, what the coaches do when they jump in and get together with all the second-grade teachers in a school, for example, is they dive into this, and they sort through it, and they talk about where the highlights are and where work needs to be done. They can see where groups of students did not understand something, and then maybe they have to go back and reteach that or make adjustments in their pacing guide for the next week, and so on and so forth. So, I just... I wanted to stop and just sort of mention that. There's a lot of power in having this information, and we are making this an absolute priority for all of our teachers and our principals to be paying attention to. So, you're just sort of seeing the highest level of it.
So, one of the things that we heard about, or maybe I noticed this during the work session, was I kept hearing like fourth-grade math over and over and over again. Is there... Are there specific interventions that, you know, that some of our coaches or interventionists are doing to address like our... The places where we seem to find more gaps?
Some of the column, Ms. Khalil, since she's here.
And I did have the opportunity...
So, I observed her working with a fourth-grade team last week. She threw it at... But she... It's a dip across the state, fourth-grade math, but that doesn't excuse...
Okay.
We've got to do something.
Okay.
But it is a dip across the state, went from third to fourth-grade math, and we want to address our dip. But she took all of the NC check-ins data and aligned to what standards she knew they had covered by our pacing guide. Some of the objectives or some of the questions she knew by the pacing guide, we haven't gotten to that. It's just not perfectly aligned at this point when we gave it. So, she pulled out that for them, and then she pointed out to the student-level data, and then you know what you do with teachers.
Hi. So, what I did was after they took the check-in is I looked at the questions, and just like Ms. Rice said, they're not allowed to download it. They're allowed to share it. But I wanted to take a level of knowledge to the children. So, what I did was I took those questions. I analyzed them, and then I looked at SchoolNet, which is where it's another pool of EOG questions. And I found questions that were very similar to the check-in questions, and I copied and pasted them into worksheets for the children, for the students and the teachers, so they can remediate with the students. And then I met with each of the seven schools, each one of the fourth grades, and I did it for third and fifth as well. And we talked about remediation and how remediation's different than intervention, because remediation is doing something with your grade level versus intervention is going to another grade level where they might be suffering. And yeah, so, that's what I'm doing.
She worked with them to regroup the students, and those teachers... Roll on. She worked with them to regroup the students. And so, that team of teachers created groups. They agreed on who was going to break out, and they have two days a week to remediate, where they go back and teach that particular standard and objective again using the questions that she sent, and also then having a more homogeneously grouped set of students. So, that those who were proficient or were in the green on that question, they could be challenged more because we want them all to grow, irregardless of if you're already proficient. So, she worked with the teachers to regroup students so that then they could have those student groups for the intervention box.
So, actually...
Is this part of the same data that's kept in the data rooms where the teachers meet and review? It's...
Well, Ms. Williams, let me get to that before they answer. This year, I have not mandated that they have physical data rooms.
Okay.
The data exist electronically, so they no longer need to put it on the walls, but they are all expected to use it. So, just a quick question on that.
It just seemed to be kind of redundant if you were doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That sounds great.
But to your point, that's exactly what they're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah. The question that I had was just similar to Ms. Hayes. Like, this was something that was evident when we did the SIPs the other... The other week. And so, I guess my question was, do we know if this is... Because I had heard at one point someone said that it was like a standard change, like there was a standard that was changed, or like how the question was asked or something. And so, then that was why some of this fourth-grade stuff was having an issue. Do we... Are we positive that that's what it is, or is it possible? Because it's across the state. Like, is it possible that it was something that was... Did not translate well during the COVID time, that now it's rearing and showing up in the fourth-grade math? And I'm just curious, and how do we know and how do we fix that?
I wish we knew for sure.
Right.
But I will tell you that there is a large percentage change. You'll hear them speak of the acronym DOK, and that is the depth of knowledge. So, that's the level of knowledge of a question. So, just think of the higher-order thinking that goes into question. So, you have a DOK1, DOK2, DOK3. And so, for third grade, there is a higher percentage of DOK1, and then 2, and then barely any 3, if at all. I think in third grade, I'm not going to be able to know that off the top of my head. But then, as you move to fourth grade, that percentage that they move from seeing just the DOK1, which is, you know, recall, work out the problem. They are moving more into analyze and apply. And so, you see a much higher percentage rate of the DOK2. So, it's just the depth of the questions, I think, that we see, and that's why it's across the state. So, we just have to continue to remember, you know, we have to take our questioning to the next level. It can't just be work out the math problem. It always needs to be an application-type question.
Thank you.
So, this past month, I also had the opportunity to sit in on one of our interventionist classes, which was kind of amazing because I had a lot of questions last month about the way that we were handling some of these gaps. And one of the things that was glaringly apparent is that, so, we're seeing these eighth graders that have these gaps in where they're, you know, in these, you know, that they haven't... performed on these certain standards. And when they're getting their intervention, it becomes clear that this is stuff that they should have learned in fourth grade. So like the distributive property, right? Or fourth or fifth grade, I don't know when the standard is, but it's back, okay, fourth. She just said fourth. So, thank you. But here, but here they are. So they missed it in fourth grade, and now they're missing it in eighth grade. And then they don't understand that, you know, they need it for pre-algebra in eighth grade, but guess what? They're going to need it for like, I don't know, quadratic formulas, you know, when they get to, you know, a higher math. And so if we don't get them in fourth grade, they're just going to keep missing it. And so like, I don't, like...
The gaps just grow. It's not, so it's not a matter of closing. We have, and so I will tell you that research says, if you can close the gaps earlier, K2, K3, the amount of time that it takes for interventions or for remediation are far less necessary in the lower grades than in the upper grades. So what would take 30 minutes a day of intervention time in the fourth grade, by the time it's the eighth grade, would be 90 minutes of intervention, which is your total instructional time. So we do need to meet them earlier and start that intervention process earlier, so that it doesn't just continue to grow and the gap get wider.
So what some other boards have done in other districts is they have asked for grant funding to get more interventionists to meet that need at the lower grades, because of exactly what you just said. I spoke to another board member in New Hanover County, actually, and they were awarded some extra funds from the General Assembly during the budget process, and that's exactly what they did with it, was they hired more interventionists to do that. So I would, I would love for that to be a priority for us going forward.
We need, we need more. We need interventions, we need coaches. We talk a lot, our theme is focus, and so we know that we have to focus the resources that we have and prioritize. And, you know, it may sometimes mean having to tell one place no for right now, because we're really having to focus here. But as a former high school principal and a former high school teacher, if I knew you were taking care of the children in elementary and middle school, they were going to get to me where they needed to be, and I just keep moving them along. So the earlier the intervention, the better.
And I'm sorry, what is the, don't we use a specific... It's not just that we hire random people. They come from like a group of people that do interventions, right?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that, Ms. Perry.
My question actually is to follow up on that, is if we were to get funding for that, is that, are those positions ones that are harder to fill? Or are those, like, from an HR perspective? Like, would that be challenging to fill that? Or would, do you feel like that would be fine?
Ms. Curran?
I think it just depends on the type of position and how it's structured. If, if people can be specific to a content area, I'm just going to be a math interventionist, I'm just going to be a reading interventionist, that's a lot easier to fill than just a blanket interventionist is.
Can I, oh, go ahead.
How much can we do in summer programs in the math area?
Good question. I know our focus has been, you know, you have to forgive me a little bit, because my focus hasn't been instruction this, over the summer. So I'm learning more about instructional and curriculum instruction for our summer programs. So, but I know our focus has been reading, NCTE programs, and I would take a look at that with, with the mathematics. So I'm not sure.
Well, that would also be dependent on students attending the summer program. So, I mean, that's a challenge in and of itself. But can I make a, I mean, just a request of our board for, you know, later, that maybe at a work session, that we could talk about appropriations for that, requesting that of our, of our state legislators? I mean, it's never too soon to look ahead to the next budget year.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Well, I do want to sound a little, I'm going to sound a little bit black, like a little broken record, but we want to make sure that we continue to focus on those clear learning goals, making sure that our teachers are teaching with, you know, the core curriculum and using our district adopted materials. High student engagement with rigor, aligned to the curriculum, I can't say that enough, making sure that they teach the curriculum. Making sure that we are providing feedback to our teachers and feedback to our students, and making sure that those strong professional learning communities are meaningful. We can, we can, we can close those gaps, and we're going to keep working hard to continue to do that. And just as Dr. Winborn said, our teachers can drill down in this information. They can look and see which students need the assistance, making sure they can get the tier support they need with the MTSS to make sure those gaps are closed. So we're going to move over to attendance and behavior with Dr. Norfleet.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Winborn and senior staff. We have this month's report for our attendance, based on month two of our monthly principals' report. We have it broken down by each level, but as a district, our overall attendance rate for the month of October was 92%. We did see a slight decrease in our overall percentage, but we are attributing that to teachers working really hard to make sure that we are marking attendance correctly, as well as it's that time of year where it's, you know, cold and flu season. So we have seen where we have students and staff members that are kind of facing the bug a little bit. So, but we are excited that schools have their own incentive programs that are running real smoothly. Attendance boards, if you've been out in the schools, I'm sure by now you've seen some of the individual practices that our principals are really pushing to increase our overall student attendance.
Was, was there a school of the month?
Yes, we actually, thank you for saying that, but we actually will be recognizing that school at our principals' meeting on Wednesday. So, oh, for last month?
Well, I, I remember who you guys said last month, and so I was like, wait, but it's not on there this month. So I didn't know, was it the same school?
We don't want to let the cat out the bag yet. We want, you know, those principals are very competitive, but we actually will be recognizing that school at our principals' meeting on Wednesday.
Mr. Perry has ordered a special trophies that they get to hold for that month.
So this is top secret at this point?
Yes. Yes, and again, you know, the principals are really excited about seeing who's going to take home the trophy next. So when we look at our behavior here, I have the comparative data for you from October 2022 to October 2023. Again, we are very excited that when we're looking at our overall office referrals, we have a decrease. Principals, school staff members are doing a great job of really enforcing what the expectation is, making sure that safety is a part of that overall safety component for wellness, as well as to support being able to provide effective instruction. So overall, again, our numbers are down, over 100 referrals from last year this time, and our suspensions, overall the suspensions are also down about $100, $100. Wouldn't that be great if it was $100? About 100 points. So again, principals are working really hard. Messages are going out, not only about expectations for behavior, but expectations for attendance. And hopefully, we're going to stay focused, and this will be an integral part, and hopefully us seeing an increase in our overall student performance.
I have a question, I shouldn't have answered. I see here where middle school, they are going to stay more challenging than high school, based based on what the maturation level, maturity level of the kids, or middle school and high school, what referrals?
So these are our office referrals. There may be some situations where there are discipline issues, but teachers and grade-level teams at the middle school level have practice in place, whether it be through our PBIS, that there may not need to matriculate to the office referral. Yes.
The new cell phone policy, how is that working out?
It's working well, and just when I was looking at this data, I can actually go through and see what the discipline referrals are. Surprisingly, there were not that many in regards to cell phone infractions. So they're catching on, they're getting the message that cell phones are not to be used during the instructional day.
Great.
How about dress code? Is that...
I didn't see a lot of referrals in the portal in regards to dress codes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you to your team.
Next on our agenda is item six, a fiscal responsibility, and I guess we've got Ms. Hines coming up to enlighten us on what's happening.
Absolutely. Good, good evening, board members. We're going to jump right in with our, our monthly updates, specifically on COVID funds. As you see, this is the summary report that we've, we've put together with our remaining funds, because ESER-2 has now gone away, so we have ESER-3 available to us. And currently, we have 7.4 million remaining in ESER, in ESER dollars. And, and just to be clear, all of the, each one of those dollars has a name already. It has a purpose, and, and we will be working its, its way to the end, basically. As you can see in those following reports, the state reports, they are the same reports that the state puts out every year, every month. And all the way towards the end, you can see that the, in the object code area are the, 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 continue on, the, the most of, excuse me, the, the majority of our funding has gone to salaries and benefits for staff. Because if you remember correctly, you know, in addition to addressing learning loss, the priority was put on retaining our staff. So that's a 75% amount towards salaries and benefits. Any questions about those COVID funds? The next item we have is related to board travel. This is the first report on board travel that, that you see this year. And, thank you. And that highlighted yellow budget, budget amount is the budget from last school year, simply because we don't have an approved budget at this time. I anticipate, unless, unless the board determines there's a need to increase that budget, I anticipate that the budget amount will be approximately the same. You all have used about two-thirds of your budget for professional development and travel at this point. And you can see how that's distributed among members. Any questions about COVID funds or board travel? Okay, thank you.
Next is 603, our 10-month classified retention.
Before that, could we talk about the, the budget update?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Our budget update for the, and, and I do realize, it's occurred to me that at our last meeting, we didn't have that budget released yet. So there is more detail in our, the finance committee meet, meeting minutes about the state budget. Generally, we, our funding allocations were pretty much where we expected them to be. When we received the initial information about allotments at the finance committee meeting, we were very concerned about our at-risk funds, we call it the PRC-069. There was a large amount of funding taken away statewide to go for some, some grants. So we were expecting a significant decrease. Well, lo and behold, we received our allotments, and we actually received an increase due to our difference in poverty in this county. So, so we actually have a small increase. We have lots of decreases across the board, but we do have that one shining star of, of a little bit of an increase. So we're happy to, happy to see that. Just as a reminder, our, some of our transfers for restart and for our international teachers won't be available until we have that PMR-2 data officially from the state in late November, early December. And we are also still waiting our decrease that we expect for the new and growing charter schools. And looking at the numbers, I'm expecting generally a loss of approximately five to six positions, and our dollar allotments, probably approximately 250,000 decrease from that. Okay? So you won't see that in the budget. That comes to you for approval next month, but we'll be making that change later. So coming soon again, budget is, will be here in December, and I appreciate your, your work on that. I, I did want to bring up, we've talked a lot about how the, how DPI has been talking about this weighted funding model for, for districts coming up. And, and they've been still, they've been talking, using the term funding in arrears recently. And, and I noticed on a webinar recently that that weighted funding model for schools disappeared from our final budget. So we will not be moving to the weighted funding model, but we are looking at funding in arrears. And I'm really excited about that, and I wanted to share that with you. Basically, next, for the 24-25 school year, our funding is going to be based on this year's ADM, our, our, our PMR best one-of-two ADM from, from this year. So come budget season this spring, we, if DPI says, does what they say they're going to do, we should have real numbers from the state for the state budget. So it could be that we have a complete state budget by June 30th. I see that look, I know. But, but I am, I am going to hold out hope that that's going to happen. So what, what's exciting is that we'll have our final numbers. All these reductions that we're waiting for now that come in December, that's going to be gone next year. So we won't be waiting for those reductions. We'll have real numbers in the spring. So we'll, we'll hope that that happens. Does anybody have questions about the budget?
I hope you're right.
I do, too.
Besides, I share your optimism, and I know that you and I have also talked that this could provide a really unique opportunity for us, the way that we plan for next year, and introduce that notion of zero-based budgeting. So it could be a huge advantage for us.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
603, 10-month classified retention. I think this came out of one of our committees, too.
It absolutely did come out of one of the, the committees. And you may be, you may remember, last month, I reported in our budget update about the transition that our 10-month classified staffer are, are going to have in their pay schedule for the upcoming year. And this is, again, this is just a reminder from what we discussed last year. Wanted to share that it does affect 186 of our employees. And just as a refresher, because they're changing pay schedules from salary to hourly this, during this, this coming summer of '24, they're going, instead of having their typical two months without pay, they'll have three months without pay. And so that's just a reminder. You know, we've already met with our staff, we've continued with notifications and FAQs. And, and the discussion we had at our last finance committee, other couple of finance committee meetings, is, is how can we support our staff during this transition? Next slide, please. What, what we were recommending is, is a retention bonus for our 10-month classified staff. And this would be specifically for our 10-month classified staff who are being moved from the salary to the hourly pay schedule. So they would be employed this year and returning next year. This would be a one-time retention bonus paid out in August of '24. That would be the month that they would typically be paid and would be missing payment that month. The bonus would be 50% of their current monthly salary, their 23, 24 monthly salary, 50% of what they would typically receive in a month. The cost for this is approximately $350,000. And while that's, that's a hefty amount, we believe that we can use the savings from... from last year's recruitment and retention bonuses, that we didn't spend all of that last year, and that money is still sitting in our fund balance. So we would like to allocate that specifically for this retention for our 10-month classified staff this year, because we want to support them in this. While we believe this is a good move for them, they'll be able to understand their paycheck better. That's a huge deal. And they'll be being paid for the hours that they've worked. That's a huge thing for them. So we think this is positive. However, they didn't ask for this. So we just want to support them and thank them for taking this on. Any questions about this?
As a bonus, I know it'd certainly be subject to federal, state withhold and so forth. What about retirement? Has that come out of it as well?
Because this is a one-time bonus, at one point it was. You used to have to have retirement, but it no longer has to have retirement taken out because it is a one-time flat bonus.
That's good.
Yes. This comes to you as a recommendation.
Motion to approve the 10-month classified retention bonus as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve as presented by Ms. Hines. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work on this.
For our next item, I'm going to ask Chris Hamm to join us. He's going to lead the way on this.
And Dr. Hamm, thank you for driving that bus route this afternoon, too. I appreciate you.
And we'll also be filling in Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah.
He's a rock star.
He's been a busy man.
It's what the job entails. That's what we do. Earlier, you talked about all the great work that's happened in committees. Both of my presentations this evening started in committees, so I'm happy to see them come to you live for some action this evening. So at our last board meeting, I talked about our bus driver supplement and how it has not changed pretty much since I've been here. So this is an opportunity, an idea that came up to try to change that. So just as a reminder, our current supplement is $350 for drivers who drive both the morning and the afternoon, or $175 for drivers who only drive the AM or PM. And stipulations with that, they must drive at least 120 days, and they must finish the school year as a driver to be eligible for the bonus. So here's a proposed addition to that bus driver supplement. We're looking to go to a perfect attendance bonus model that'd be based on attendance during each of the 10 pay periods that bus drivers get paid during the year. So for our drivers who drive AM and PM, that would be an extra $65 per month. For our drivers who only drive AM or PM, $32.50. So the potential for our drivers to drive both shifts would be to go to $650 in addition to the $350. And for our one-shift drivers to go to $325 or $500 bonus. So there, again, you see the potential for our drivers. And that would be paid out of our transportation funds. And Ms. Hines and I calculated it, if everybody qualified every month, that would be about a $50,000 investment in our drivers.
I just want to be really transparent and just say, well, number one, I appreciate all of our bus drivers, but especially the ones that show up every single day. Because, you know, I know we have like 14 double routes right now, and a lot of kids that need to get to and from school. But secondly, I wanted to point out that this recommendation actually originated with a staff member who heard about what somebody else was doing in another district, and then pulled aside a board member to make a recommendation, which then brought it to the committee, which then now is here before the board. So just, I mean, like, I want to make sure that everybody understands that we, you know, we're not perfect and we don't know everything. But like, if people see something and want to make a recommendation or have an idea or see that another district is doing something different that might work for us better, send an email or pick up the phone and call a board member or, you know, whoever. Because we don't know, you know, everything, but we're absolutely willing to consider a lot of things. So with that being said, motion to approve the bus driver bonus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want to oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hamm.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Number seven, health and safety operations facilities. I think, Dr. Hamm, we may have to see you again here.
Yes, thank you. So again, a lot has happened in the last month after I presented and talked about our current state of our activity buses. Shortly after that, Ms. Hines and I talked, and we looked at our current budget. And we have some funds. We determined that we had funds to buy two activity buses outright. But we looked at other options. Again, we have 14 that we really need to replace and come up with a plan for. So at the finance committee, I presented a proposal, a quote, to buy two buses. And also, Carolina Thomas offers a plan to basically finance five buses at a time and make one yearly payment. And some of the other folks are going to have to fill in some of the details as I was not at the liaison meeting. And that went to the liaisons, and some things changed from there to provide us a little bit of budget flexibility. So I'm going to ask Ms. Hines to talk about that.
One of the questions we had for the county commissioners, because the question was, should we make a request for additional capital funds? Because activity buses are the responsibility of the county. And in that discussion, we really came up with the concept of using our fund balance and capital LA. As a question came up, you know, the county, Mr. Cummings helped me understand on the finance side, what is allowable with our fund balance. We have always kept it funneled in the exact path that it was intended initially. But we do have some flexibility with that. And in the process, we've come up with an ability, as Dr. Hamm mentioned, we found that we have funds set aside for activity bus fees. When the schools go on field trips, there are fees to use the activity bus. Well, they have a nice little bank account that has developed over the years. And so $255,000 is coming from that, which is terrific. Which left, out of these two quotes, that left approximately $424,000 to find. And moved some things around today, and $367,000 of it is going to come from within our Category 2 and 3, which is equipment and vehicles. And that's the intent of where the activity buses would typically be purchased from, which leaves us with $57,000 that we would pull from that Category 1 area, which is repairs, building repairs and maintenance. So I wanted to maintain the repair, building repairs and maintenance as much as possible. But this seems like a viable way to do it. This, again, is the cost of purchasing the buses outright. The lease quote that we got, which is still an option, however, there was an interest fees of $88,000, and that hurts my feelings. So I am recommending that we just buy these outright and develop a plan for regular replacement of these buses so we don't have them en masse like we do right now.
And I assume that these buses will be under the same type of warranty as as the other plan that was presented?
Yes, it's a five-year warranty. Yes, ma'am. Yes, it'll be a total of five, so four standard 72-passenger buses and one activity bus with a wheelchair lift. You have two different quotes because the four activity buses are available now. If approved, we'll have them in about two weeks. The activity bus with the wheelchair lift has to be ordered and built. That will be a March-April timeframe for delivery.
Aren't there buses that you're going to actually retire for surplus?
Yes, so I have already looked at a plan for replacement and what that looks like. I will be coming back next month with a consent item to sale buses, at least five upfront. I will keep the current wheelchair lift bus until it is replaced in March-April. And I've developed a plan over the next six years to replace the remaining buses.
Dr. Hamm, you said "sale," so how much money can we get for a bus that we're going to sell? Are they important?
It just depends. I'm going to put it on the state surplus property website, like I've done these other vehicles. I am hoping to get enough from the sale of these six buses, because I'm recommending ultimately to buy one large bus and one mini bus, the 18-passenger bus, the next couple of years. I'm hoping from the sale of the current activity buses to be able to pay for the mini bus outright with that.
This comes to us as an action item?
Motion to approve the activity buses as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Motion passes. Our next item is human capital management. We'll have an update on human resources from Ms. Corrigan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually going to ask Ms. McKnight to come join me up here. So we just wanted to give you kind of a brief overview of what has occurred since the last time we presented an HR update. As you can see, our overall vacancies are much lower than they were in August. We are down to 17 total certified vacancies, four in core classrooms versus the 28 we started with, three EC vacancies, one ESL, and then nine others. And those are agriculture classes and other elective-type classes, but also the speech-language pathologists and some of those other hard-to-fill positions. And we did just have one of our AIG positions filled, so that number nine will become eight very soon. But then we also had, we've talked a lot this year about our classified staff members and how we need to focus on all of our staff and not just one group of staff members. And so we are looking at our classified staff vacancies. That is actually our highest-need area at the moment. We have 21 vacancies. Six of them are in maintenance. And we don't have a large maintenance department, so that's quite a lot in that department. Seven teacher assistants, four custodians, and four other positions. There are things like, not CFO, I was going to say CFO, that's your job. Finding it's in other departments like that. So we do also this year have a special emphasis on our international teachers, and that's part of why I've asked Ms. McKnight to come hang out with us. If you'll slide it up just a little bit more. There you go. So we have taken a different approach this year with our international teachers, mostly because we have so many new ones coming in throughout the year this year. So our 32 international teachers that we hired between August and September have started to arrive. I think we have about 10, 12 who are already here. About 12 who are already here, and the rest should be here by December. They are trickling in a little bit at a time. And, you know, when it comes to just throwing somebody into a classroom, that's not the best option. And so we have done some very small group onboarding so far, where Ms. McKnight and Sarah Moss have met with them to go through their paperwork and kind of just get a little bit of information about our district. But they are currently, the ones who are here, are shadowing in our buildings. They are learning from other teachers and other staff members in their school. They are working with people at the district level to learn our EC programs that they're going to have to use to learn some of those on the digital focus site that we have, and making sure they can access all the curriculum. They're doing those types of things now so that when they get into their classroom, they're actually prepared for that difference. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Ms. McKnight and let her share a little bit more about what she's doing with international teachers.
Good evening, board members. So this year, I have had the pleasure of working with our international teachers. These teachers are some of the bravest beings that I know. They are enduring trips that are anywhere from 17 to 34 hours with 13-hour layovers, so they are exhausted by the time they arrive to our district. So in an effort to ensure that we are providing our international teachers with the support that we expect our teachers to provide our students with, we are having to do things a little bit differently. So after they arrive and they complete their broad orientation and onboarding with us, they then have a day. They typically spend that day going to the DMV to see what they will need in order to get their driver's license. They have to go to the Social Security Administration to work on getting their social security cards. And that ends up being quite the feat more often than not. So after they have done that, they are then going to the schools, and they are shadowing. In some cases, they're shadowing other teachers in their school, so they're able to see, you know, best practices in real time. In other cases, there are some of our international teachers who are going into buildings, and they don't have a colleague in that same area. And so by giving them the opportunity to shadow, they can go to another school. We have a pre-K EC teacher who does not have a colleague in that same area. So we're able to do some pairings throughout the district that make it beneficial for all of them. We do have a year-long professional development. It's really more of a personal development than professional development. It turns out that we do address things like classroom management. We do address things like lesson planning. But before we can really get to that, we have to create a safe and nurturing environment for these teachers in which they feel free to collaborate, in which they feel free to share the difficulties they're having. And we put our heads together and we see what we can come up with. That doesn't always result in a definitive answer, but the process of knowing that they have a safe place and they have people who are looking out for their best interest helps significantly. And so it's kind of a year-long PPD as opposed to year-long PD, because we definitely hit that personal piece hard. The weight of being in a new country with students who differ from what they're accustomed to can sometimes be quite overwhelming. And so it has been, they've been very appreciative of the fact that this school district is affording them the opportunity to come in, kind of settle in before being expected to deliver instruction in our schools. Any questions?
How much support did they get from the instructional coaches, just like they would any other teacher?
Yes, they attend PLCs. They have access to the instructional coaches. The goal is that when they see things that are occurring in the classrooms that they're unfamiliar with, or they don't understand the why behind that, that they spend some time working with their principals and instructional coaches to get clarity on those things.
I love the personal touch. That's very, very important. Good rapport, a new person into our environment here. That's going to give us a great dividends. Thanks for being observant of that.
Any other questions?
So I just want to mention that I think that's the process that you all have and have established is very good.
Thank you.
It's going to definitely make them feel more comfortable the more they, you know, get that deal from you all.
So how big of a difference is there in the classroom from the different cultures? And what would you say is the biggest challenge that our international teachers face in that regard?
Yes, it's a vast difference. I would say managing student behaviors. They are not accustomed to some of the behaviors that are exhibited in our classrooms. And so finding their voice, because sometimes it does take that, is required. And so it does help to have a team that's behind them to say, well, you know, try this. Or have you thought about, or have you spoken to? And then we come back together. Typically, we meet twice a month. November's a little different because there are a number of things that are happening with that. But that's typically how we set that up. It's definitely a culture shock. Definitely.
But there are lots of fun things that kind of go along with that, too. And Ms. McKnight doesn't toot her own horn, but she has really taken ownership of this and just done an amazing job. So she probably deserves a round of applause for it because she has done such an amazing job. job. But, you know, there are fun things, too, that I think that they get to do in, in these special meetings with Ms. McKnight that they wouldn't otherwise, like they discovered ranch from Georgia's, and it changed their worlds, y'all. Changed their lives. So, you know, there, there are a lot of fun things that they can see go on. It's not just about, oh, this is such a hard life. Like, they, they do have fun and things, too, while they're going through it.
How can the community get involved?
Thank you so much for all you're doing.
Excuse me, I have a question. How can the community get involved? I know, beginning the school year, we have the chamber, having the breakfast, things like that. Are they involved in any way, trying to welcome this international teacher to our community here?
So the chamber and the Gramwell Education Foundation gave us additional welcome bags. So all of our international teachers who are coming in now are getting those same welcome bags that everybody else got during orientation. We are having an actual new hire orientation, specifically for our international teachers in conjunction with the academic team. So, you know, they'll come in and they'll get that same experience that everyone else received to kind of welcome them to the community. But we are, I don't know if you heard Ms. Williams talking earlier from the HR Innovation Committee, are doing a new teacher warming. And part of that is specifically geared to our international teachers. So, you know, they might be able to come in and get items a day in advance than some of our other new teachers, just because they truly come here with suitcases and that's it. They don't have pillows, they don't have beds, they don't have anything to cook with. They, they have nothing when they come. And some come and leave their families back home, and so they don't even have that support.
I have one question about the EC teachers. We have three right now that's a vacant, there's a vacancy. So tell me more about them, and what grade level, and how those kids have been serving in the classroom.
So all of our students are being served in some capacity. So we have contract teachers who Ms., Dr. Cotterman has worked with to fill in the spot. So really, the vacancies are less about service vacancies and more about a physical teacher who is a Gramwell County Public Schools employee not being there. But they, they are making sure that students are being served.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
We need a motion now to go into closed session after about a 10-minute break. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
To go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
We need now to have a motion to approve our certified and classified personnel exhibit as presented in closed session.
Motion to approve classified and certified personnel as presented in closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next thing we need to talk about is dates to remember, upcoming events and announcements. We have November 10th holiday, the office is closed, and school is out. November 13th through 15th, the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference in Greensboro, which I think many of us are a part of, or all of. And then Thanksgiving holiday, the 23rd and 24th, the office is closed and the kids are out.
Excuse me. December 4th, Board of Education regular meeting, six people. Mary Potiphar Center for Education. Next thing you know, it's going to be Christmas. So, excuse me. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you for your hard work tonight. And this is a record.